Okay. It is 5:30. We will call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Tate.
Present.
Vice Mayor Carrillo.
Present.
Mayor Flores.
Present.
And I would like the record to reflect that Councilmember Stowe just walked in.
Thank you very much. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the City Council on any matter scheduled for closed session. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. Please.
Speaker, Honored, we have ten items before the council in closed session this evening. The first pursuant to Government Code Section 549-56.8, Council Real Property Negotiators' property, APN 261-130-004, agency negotiator John Lawless, negotiating Porterville and Cornerstone main properties, two LP under negotiation terms and price. Item two, Government Code Section 549-57.6, Council Labor Negotiator, Agency Negotiator John Lawless and Patrice Huldreth, party organizations Porterville Peace Officer Association, Management Confidential Series, Public Safety Support Unit, Porterville City, Employees Association, Porterville City, Firefighters Association, Fire Officer Series, and all represented management employees. Item three, Government Code Section 549-56.95, liability claim claimant Patrick Padma, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item four, Government Code Section 549-56.95, liability claim claimant Cecilia Chavez, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item five, Government Code Section 549-56.95, liability claim claimant Bertha Loretta Stroud, agency claimed against City of Porterville. Item six, Government Code Section 549-56.9, subsection D, subsection one, Council's legal counsel in existing litigation, John Duran v. City of Porterville, U.S. District Court, Eastern Division case number one colon two-two-cv-00614-dad-sab. Item seven, Government Code Section 549-56.9, subsection D, subsection three, Council's legal counsel anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, six cases in which facts are not yet known to potential plaintiff. Item eight, Government Code Section 549-56.9, subsection D, subsection four, Council's legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, one case. Item nine, Government Code Section 549-57, public employee's performance evaluation title city manager. And item ten, Government Code Section 519-57, public employee performance evaluation title city attorney.
Thank you. It is 5:32. We will now go into closed session.
Ready? Okay. It is 6:37. We will reconvene open session and report on reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me, I have a small plethora of things to report here. So, on item A3, the claim by Patrick Padma, motion by Councilmember Tate, seconded by Councilmember Stowe, on a 4-0 vote, that claim was denied. And then on item A4, claim by Cecilia Chavez, motion by Councilmember Stowe, And then on item A5, claim of Bertha Stroud. Motion by Councilmember Stowe, seconded by Vice Mayor Corillo. In a 4-0 vote, that claim was denied. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Corillo. And please remain standing for an invocation or a moment of silence.
So, we pledge... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone that would like to come forward and do an invocation?
First of all, I'd like everybody to take a moment of silence. This is the 78th anniversary of the Normandy invasion, as well as we've had over 50 mass shooting deaths since the beginning of May. We'd like to thank our Heavenly Father for everything we've had and what we will gain, and that He'll bring us prosperity and intelligence and happiness. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward with an invocation? Not? Please be seated. We will now go into oral communications. This is the opportunity to address the council in any matter of interest, whether on the agenda or not. Please address all items not scheduled for public hearing at this time. Unless additional time is authorized by the council, all commentary shall be limited to three minutes. If you are here for the public hearings, numbers 16 and 17, please hold your comment until those items come up on the agenda, and you will be given the opportunity at that time. Please.
Edith Levon, address on record. I'm here as a private individual taxpayer and citizen of Porterville for way too many years. Those of you who know me know that the protective services are what I support the most because our police and our fire departments save us in many different ways and serve us in many different ways. And the majority of them are good, honest, hardworking people. Today, I'm going to address the police department. I see that you're negotiating on wages and working on things like that. And what I'd like to say is, I know how many members we have on the force. I know how many we have on duty at any one time. I follow, you know, the webpage that we have as a city. I follow all that and the police things. We, as a community and as a council, are not serving our officers appropriately. First of all, they're understaffed. Second, they're underpaid. And third, they need more training. We don't need military weapons. We need to treat our officers with the due respect for the fact that they lay their lives on the line for us every day. A lot of people don't like what they do. And a lot of it is dealing with the homeless. But they have to deal with federal and state laws, as well as county and city laws. And they do a damn good job, in my opinion. And I feel that they need to be taken care of appropriately. And I'm studying right now fire department things. And unfortunately, I can't tell you how many engines go this way or this way every day because I live on Morton. But I can tell you, I do count how many firemen are on those trucks. And many times, it's not what is recommended for true safety. So, we need to take care of them, too. So, when you're dealing with them, we get them here, we train them, and they go to where they get paid better. We have a chief right now who I have a great deal of respect for, who I think can make our police force stellar if he's provided what they need.
Thank you very much. Is there someone else that would like to come forward?
Brock Neely, address on record. Fernando? Lots of reading material. The top small brochures are information on CalPERS. The top one is the fiscal year '21 financial statement. The second one is the statement of policy for fund risk mitigation that they implemented in 2015. And it's been modified twice since then. The third is the economic impacts of CalPERS pensions in California for fiscal year 2019, 2020. People don't realize that when people get their pension checks, they spend it. And when they spend it locally at businesses, then those businesses have money to spend on supplies and jobs. It's a self-perpetuating thing. Now, that, there's three of you up there that if you didn't have your CalPERS, what would you be living on? Social Security? You couldn't make it on that. So, part of those statements, though, in that staff report on item 21 are false. It's not CalPERS' problem that you guys have an unfunded liability. That was previous city councils and city managers that didn't fully fund the city retirement system before CalPERS took it over. Now, the expanding interest on it, yeah, that's coming from CalPERS. But they're also mandated that they have to maintain a certain level of liquidity. And to do that, they have to change the interest rates periodically. They also change the actuary tables because people are living longer. When PERS was first started, people were living to 70. Now, they're thinking people are living out to 100 years. So, they had to calculate for that now. Then the other information you have there is information on weapons and ballistics and the differences between standard ballistic weapons and assault weapon ballistics. Remington makes a 223-chambered hunting rifle with a 22-inch barrel that has 12 turns to the rifling per inch. You get hit with that, chances are you can be taken to an emergency room, and you'll live. It'll go through and through. You can take a Remington AR-15-style rifle that only has six turns to the inch, which the bullet is designed to do this when it comes out of the end of the barrel. So, when it hits flesh, it turns like this. Just half a minute, please.
30 seconds to summarize.
It starts to warble, and it creates what they call a shock wave, which actually goes in and explodes your inside body parts. Chances of you living from that are no. The AR-15-type weapons were designed to hunt humans, not wild game. Now, there's actually trauma surgeons that are now starting to go through the halls of Congress and talk to these senators to try to tell them to change, that they need new laws.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is John Coffey, and I live in Porterville. My contact information is on record. For the record, I also received my retirement from CalPERS. I am speaking tonight about item number 21 on the agenda. I hope that you will refer this item back to staff for more accurate information. Does the value of PERS go up and down? Yes. Does, but that is mainly due to market fluctuations. Is PERS in a strong financial situation? Yes. The last time I saw the value was about $500 billion, with a B, billion, 200 million U.S. dollars. Does the city of Porterville have an unfunded liability with PERS? Yes. And this is mainly due to the deliberate underfunding of your retirement system before converting to PERS. This was done by prior councils and city managers. The service charge that you're paying to PERS is to pay off the money PERS had to kick in to make the city system whole back when you joined PERS. Should you do something to pay off that charge? Probably not a bad idea, but do so with complete and accurate information. In the second paragraph of your document, you, excuse me, you're stating that your goal is to pay 100% of the retirement costs, but not less than 70%. If you drop to anything less than 100% of the cost, then you start increasing your unfunded liability. With all of this being said, I hope that you will send this item back to staff and insist on more complete and accurate information. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth under oral communications?
Good evening. My name's Rae Dean Strawn, 54 West Danner Avenue, Porterville, California. I wanted to mention item number three on the consent calendar. I realize that these are basically chiseled in stone, and there's no way to change it. But I just wanted to have it on the record that number three is authorization to purchase transit bus advertising for the temporary library opening. They want to spend, let's see, ma'am, $6,184.64 to put decal, a wrap on a bus for only six months. It's not a year, just for six months, to advertise the opening of the temporary library. I think the Porterville Recorder's covered it well. I think we know there's a temporary library. It's been coming for, what, two years now? I don't think you need to spend $6,000 to advertise a temporary library, and it's only going to be on the bus for six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forth? Thank you.
I have things to pass out.
Fernando?
Gail Knuckles, 13144, Road 216. I'm here about water. We had a stellar report from our gentleman over here that you've got the people in Porterville lined out, when they can water their lawns and when they can't. But if you go out of the city limits, I want to know why the municipal farm leasee on the 40 acres on West Road is pumping groundwater when they can use the affluent water. And I also want to know who's paying that pump bill. There's water right down at the corner on the south end that they can use the affluent water. And since you've taken a lot of the property out of the lease, there's tons of water and to for the city to let them pump groundwater. And as the pictures I showed you, this is one time that they pumped to irrigate that 40 acres. You know how long this water stood here? Mr. Lawless? Waste that water like that is ridiculous. And the casino's going to need all the groundwater they need to run their operation. And to waste this water when there's affluent water right at the corner that they can use in the pipeline, and they don't do it. Is the city paying that pump bill? Because the pump belongs to another company, and I'm sure they're not paying it. And also, the leasee are not following the good farming practices out there. They, the city tests four times a year, which they've done since the agreement was in place, to see about the nitrogen level. And they just tested it not too long ago, and it's above normal. There are practices that are not being followed by the leasee with affluent water. They don't ever rip the ground. They don't apply a JIP. And these practices are not being followed. And in the future, the ground will be full of salt, and the ground will be worthless. So, who is managing these people out there? The city should be ashamed of themselves, letting them waste this water. You know how long that water sat there? A week and a half. And one thing good about it, it is fresh water, so it was prickly laid down in the soil, so it wasn't wasted like the affluent water. But when you have all that affluent water out there, why isn't the city making them use it? All they have to do is fill that pipe down at the end and use it. Why are they wasting fresh water and electricity? And who's paying that bill? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward?
Hi, guys, doing? My name's Jay. I'm here on behalf of Porterville Ford at 701 North Main. We're in the middle of a project that we've been working on since March 3 of this year. We've reached out to almost all of you and sent emails and stuff like that. Haven't really gotten much help. Mr. Lawless emailed us this morning, and we just had some questions about how things really go. As I said, we started this March 3. We went in, tried to get a little permit, came back, went through some of the works, entered the permit, and just some general pictures and stuff like that for it. They said, "Yeah, you guys are good to go. Pour the concrete, get going." So, we did. Submitted everything, waited a little bit. And about a month and a half later, actually, James Wickersham from the city came down and issued us a stop work permit or kick a ticket. And we asked him why. He said, "We sent you an email. We said, 'Okay, never got it.'" He says, "Go down to the city, they should know what's going on." We come down here to the city, no one knows anything. And we're okay. So, we actually contacted a contractor to come down and kind of help us out a little bit. We submitted some more plans with more pictures, more drawings, more measurements, more everything else. And that was almost a month ago. So, we're still kind of waiting. We're three months into this and haven't really gotten anywhere. And we're kind of wondering what exactly we need to do. Had all this stuff kind of been laid out from the get-go, we probably would be a little further along, I guess. But at the time, all they said was just fill out this one form paper, give us a picture of the building, and we're good to go. To give you a little example of the building, it's 10 foot by 13. That's it. We're just expanding out a little bit, getting a little more showroom space so we can hire more employees and kind of employ more people around town. Of course, grow the business and all the other good stuff that kind of goes along with it. But like I said, all we've gotten is like a lot of pushback. No one seems to know anything that's going on at all. No one can tell us what's going on. And every time we come back with more measurements and more of this, we're asked for more, 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 more. And we're kind of wondering, where do we draw the line? No one seems to be know anything of what's going on. And we're kind of confused about that. So, we're just kind of laying it out there. I'm hoping we can meet with John tomorrow. If he can come by and kind of talk to us, we'd appreciate it. Yeah. Like I said, everyone should have had in their email. We sent a pretty good email with a lot of detail in it. And like I said, John was the only one that kind of reached back for us. But for the most part, we're just, we're small business. But at the same time, it's a business that's been here almost 60 years. And so, it's a big business. And this town, it's a big staple, this town. That building's been around forever. It's kind of a staple down at the end of Main Street. And we're looking to grow and stay here and just kind of make it better, make it bigger, and give us better opportunity here in town. So, that's all I got for today. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Do we have anyone on virtually that would like to come in for oral communications?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. See that there are none? We will now move on to the AB 1234 reports. This is the time for all AB 1234 reports required pursuant to Government Code 53232.3, Tulare County Homeless Task Force. Claudia Calderon.
Hi, good afternoon. The task force met on May 18, 2022, virtually by Zoom. I attended as alternate for Mayor Flores as she had a conflict. And Mr. Biden and I attended remotely via Facebook Live. After approving the minutes from the previous meeting and adopting the AB 361 resolution that allows the meeting to continue to meet remotely, Mr. Whitaker, Noah Whitaker, provided an update on the rehab progress for both project room key and home key conversions to permanent supportive housing units. He then presented the local homeless action plan goals. And then he also reiterated that all the half-three funds for Tulare County will be going to stabilize the two home key and room key projects in addition to any of the bonus half-three funds that may come into our area. So, rather than supporting other existing projects, we're looking at new projects. Miguel Perez from the KTHA Homeless Alliance indicated that the COC's half-three allocation was primarily focused on funding existing projects. Our next, Casey Ennis from the Tulare County Behavioral Health, gave a brief overview of a new youth crisis stabilization unit. a new youth crisis stabilization unit, which will include a 12 bed facility with robust stabilization services within the, with the goal of preventing a higher level of care needs. So to prevent, like hospitalizations. And they are currently looking at a potential site. Next, Mr. Whitaker presented suggestions for the task force bylaw revision to be considered at a future task force meeting and provided a link to the recommended changes for the task force members to review. Lastly, Tulare County, Tulare, Visalia, South Hope, and CSAT provided an update on their local efforts to address homelessness, and I provided the Porterville update mentioning that the Porterville Welcome Center continues to see between 65 to 85 individuals daily. And through the Wednesday services, including bi-monthly link events, as of April 30th, they have served 2,054 individuals. I also reported that the Link Committee continues to meet with the focus to continue to add to the plethora of existing services and are currently working on medical needs such as mobile dental, dental unit, street medicine, vision exams, and whatnot. To conclude, I also reported that the, the PLHA RC, or, or the PSH Emergency and Navigation Center, funds also closed, and those applications were under review at that time to bring forward to the City Council for this meeting. And the meeting was recorded on Facebook Live for the Tulare County Facebook page, so if anyone wants to see that meeting, it's still there. And the next meeting is scheduled for June 15th, 2022, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Claudia, for that presentation. Did council have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you very much, especially for that attendance, because there were three consecutive meetings on that day. The next one is Council of Cities. That, I'd like to report that Vice Mayor Carrillo, Mr. Lawless, and I attended the meeting. Absent cities were Exeter, Lindsay, and Tulare. One item of action was the unanimous approval of the March 16 minutes. Discussion to the selection of a primary and alternate transit representative to the TCAG Board to fill the remainder of the current term that ends June 30th. Brought to the table was the formula. One representative from the cities. From that, the person with the most city votes will become the representative, and the one with the second highest votes will be the alternate. If there is a tie, that will go to the Council of Cities for a final decisions. The names that were submitted from Porterville Vice Mayor Carrillo, Lindsay, Council Member Ipoletoseros, Visada, Council Member Brett Taylor. It was my understanding that we are to place the agenda for nominee. I stated that we had already done that at a council meeting. A Council of City staff representative will assemble these names, draft a sample report with the names, listing them in alphabetical order, and that each city can work from in selecting. The process is hopefully to be completed by June 30th. A brief update of drought and impacts with regard to agriculture ordinances, landscape, and GSA were brought to the table. A highlight with regard to the status of the Tulare County Economic Development Corporation. No discussion of the multi-jurisdictional housing element because TCAG had already taken action and support. That concludes my report. The next meeting is slated for July 20th. Moving on to the California Transportation Commission reception. Once we left the Council of Cities meeting in Visalia, we journeyed to Fresno. In attendance from TCAG, this was a TCAG Formula Transportation effort, were Mr. Pete Van der Poel as a TCAG vice, as a TCAG Chair. I was there as a TCAG Vice Chair. Linda Launer from the City of Dinuba City Council, Vice Mayor Kelly Carrillo from the City of Porterville, along with City Manager John Lawless. Linda Launer, City of Dinuba. Elizabeth Forte is TCAG Staff, Rich Tree representing the Tulare County Regional Transit Authority. The focus of this event was with the emphasis to finish the 99. Commissioner Leanne Eager, who is the Chair for the California Transportation Commission, provided those of us who were in attendance the importance to complete and finish the 99 in the business plan of widening the 99 from four to six lanes from Kern County to San Joaquin County as that still remains unfinished. This reception allowed us to reconnect with several of the Transportation Commissioners that we had met at the Town Hall earlier. We met, I was able to speak to Mayor Jerry Dyer that evening with regard to some of the efforts along the 99, speaking to Fresno State President Saul Sandoval for his participation, and meeting other people from the EDC Fresno County area. Again, this was a focus on the 99 effort and communications made on a large scale beyond the Town Hall that we had attended previously. Vice Mayor, did you have any comment to this regard?
I don't have anything to add to the report. It was just really nice to be there and meet some of the representatives from TCAG also. So, thank you.
Thank you. The Tulare County Regional Transit Agency, we don't have a report for that?
We do.
We do have a report. Thank you.
We do.
We have a report. Thank you.
On May 16th, there was only a few items on the agenda, but there's public hearing of the 2022 fare and service changes. Public hearing was held to receive the comments and propose the 2022 fare exchanges. The regional agency board unanimously eight to zero approvers during fare collection effective September 1st, 2022. The agency board unanimously adopted the 2022 fare schedule, which was buses, general fare is $1.50 for seniors and disabled, 75 cents for the youth, and for 10 and under, or the youth 12 and under is free. Dial or ride as senior disabled was $3, and on-demand all passengers was $5. The agency board unanimously approved eight to zero at 2022. Service, no changes in the commuter routes. Local fixed routes will operate Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and limited Sunday services from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The dial or ride will operate the same hours and the same days as the local fixed routes, Monday through Saturday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, and limited Sunday services from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. On-demand will operate Monday through Saturdays from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and limited Sunday service from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. The second item was a special meeting on the 25th, and we approved that special meeting, eight to zero. And the last item on that date was transit safety and security. The TCRTA discussed the increase of incidents in transit centers and, and buses throughout the county, and currently, they do not have a security guards or any kind of transit, at the transit center, or, or any kind of relay or cameras on the stops. So developing a public transportation agency plan that required a federal transit administration, they also unanimously approved and formulated a Safety and Security Committee to address safety and security issues. And they will go to a special meeting on May 25th, and that was to award the Transit Operations Services to TransDev Services Inc. On December 15th, 2021, the agency advertised and requests for proposal, a single contractor to operate the agency's services. And on March 17th, 2022, the Regional Transit Agency received four proposals. The evaluation committee reviewed and scored each of the four proposals, and TransDev was number one. First Transit was number two. National Express was number three, and MV Transportation was number four. And TransDev price was compared to the transit agency independent cost estimate and found to be reasonable. And of course, the board unanimously five to zero approved that contract. And the service will begin July 1st, 2022, in amount not to exceed 76.7 million for five-year term. Additional fare collection equipment with Gen Fare staff was the next item, and staff identified additional fare collection equipment that was required to be purchased for the regional fare system project. And the agency board, again, five to zero approved the additional fare collection equipment at a total cost not to exceed 100, $109,239. And our next scheduled meeting is June 27th, and to be considered adoption of the budget.
Thank you very much for that report. San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District Board, we
Was me also.
That is you.
And there was one item on that, on that agenda, and that was to reappoint city representative to the governing board, which was Mayor Vavanel Avaro, Avaro, Avaro Prescott, I think it's Pat. And that was passed unanimously, unanimously, and the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you very much. That was, that was a nice report. The next one is the Eagle Mountain Relocation Committee. I'm going to take care of number six, 10, and 15. They all have to do the, with the relocation committee meeting, May 19th. The meeting in white was for 11 o'clock. We didn't receive notice until 12:30 that the meeting had canceled. The meeting of May 26th, and the meeting of June 2nd, we did not receive notices to attend, so we don't have any information to that regard. So there was no attendance on our behalf. The next one is the Library Facility Planning Committee. Vice Mayor.
Yes. The Library Facility Planning Committee met on May 19th at 4:15 PM. The committee received an update on the new library. Regarding location, staff has remained in communication and is still in negotiations with the willing seller for the final parcel on the future library site across from the courthouse. Relating to the financing component, city staff continues to work on financing and funding strategies. As far as an update on grant efforts, staff submitted the $10 million California State Building Forward Library Infrastructure Program Grant Application. The state review team is currently reviewing all the applications and plans to make notifications of the awards by this summer. The state is hopeful that it will be able to offer future grant rounds based on available funding. Next, a library services update was provided. The library held a community event, Dia de los Niños on April 30th. That event had community information booths, storytelling, face painting, a photo booth, numerous drawings for special giveaways, and 375 patrons attended. Virtual Storytime is being held Tuesday mornings in English and Spanish via Facebook Live, and those continue to be well-followed. In April, there was 1,932 total views. A virtual reading program will run from June 6th through July 31st. Staff is planning a July calendar for summer programs that will be held in the temporary library. Staff will partner with local school districts to provide an off-site version of the lunch at the library. Our city library was awarded a grant in the amount of $2,400 from the California State Library. Staff will distribute a variety of books and craft kits to go. Staff has also been busy processing materials for the temporary library. As of April 30th, staff has processed 29,859 library materials. Also, furniture has been installed. The movers have delivered over 500 boxes of new materials, and network wiring has been installed. Once 80% of materials are on the shelf, a definitive opening date will be set. Lastly, during this meeting, committee member Catherine May said she's moving out of the area. Her seat on the Library Facility Planning Committee was that seat of dedicated to a library and literacy commissioner. So the commission has recommended Esther Figueroa to replace Catherine. The meeting adjourned at 4:40 PM. The next meeting will be August 18th at 4:15 PM, and that concludes my report, unless there's questions in council.
Did you have any questions? We're just looking forward to the opening. Thank you for that report. I happened to, it's been a while, but it was, I saw people that were in the building. I dropped in just to get the visual, and some of the furniture had been delivered, but that's been quite some time back. Thank you. The next is the fire badge pinning ceremony. It was an honor to be in attendance because we had not had one in quite some time. Listening to Chaplain Walker's invocation, the chief's message, watching the Academy recap and the video, there are countless hours, and I want to say thank you to Captain Rudy Aguilar and firefighter Austin Gonzalez in their countless hours to train the men that were sworn in on this date. I also want to acknowledge the families and the friends who were there in support on this date, in particular, the firefighters who were in attendance to support their brothers. I want to say congratulations to the four firefighters that were sworn in and received their badges, Andrew Tamayo, Nick Klugo, Darren Noe, and Damon Noe. Councilmember Tate, do you have any comment or anything to add?
They're twins. They're twins, working on different shifts.
No, it was just an honor to be there and to actually see what all they go through as far as their training. It's pretty rigorous.
Thank you. The next one is the Tulare County Development Corporation Board. Though Mr. Lawless, Mr. Reiden, and I went to attend the meeting in person, Mr. Lawless nor Mr. Reiden were a part of the closed session discussion. It started, the closed session started immediately at 7:30. It was an operations update and personnel matters. There's nothing to report. The meeting was adjourned after closed session due to the length of that discussion. All items that were on the agenda, they will be carried over to another meeting. This concludes that report. Our next meeting is June 22nd. The next one would be the KJUG Free Summer Concert. Did any council members attend that one? Okay, thank you. The Military Banner Ceremony. For me, this event is a joyous and a memorable ceremony. I look forward to it every year. The two years that we went virtual, it was just not the same. And for me, it was an excitement to be able to recognize the 2020, 2021, and 2022 nominees. The three combined years totaled 451, which now brings in the City of Porterville 852 banners total. The ceremony also included those who were killed in action. I did the best to practice the list of names out loud the day before and also that morning to be able to pronounce the names and watch the families beam as her family member was called out, and they were announced, and the claps, and everybody who was joining. But it was also important on that day to thank the families of the men and the women who served our country, because those who are still actively serving in the military, with each deployment, the entire family becomes the integral part of service to the country. I am aware that there were other city representatives from outlying areas who came to Porterville to observe our ceremony, because speaking to them, they are taking it back to their cities to develop their military banner programs. Vice Mayor, did you have any comment?
Yes. This was my first, I guess, in-person military banner ceremony, so I was very honored to be a part of it, and I also sit on the Military Banner Committee, so to see it all come alive in person and, and be a part of that was very honoring. I think the best part, there was a lot of names to go through for three years, and so I appreciate Mr. Moore for going, helping me go through those names, because I think it was really important to not just be able to read those names, but read the names according to the way the families pronounce them and have the correct pronunciation, because it's really important for the families that are sitting there and the honorees to hear their name. That's what they're, we're there for, to honor, honor those. And so I think the best part for me was afterwards, just being able to And so I think the best part for me was afterwards, just being able to talk to the families and the honorees. And, you know, it's amazing that they were thanking us, not just, I don't think as city council necessarily, but as the city for recognizing them and then having the banners. So I was able to thank, obviously, those that should be thanked, and that's the honorees and their families for their service. But also just wanted to express gratitude for, I know we say it all the time, but for our staff, because those events are not really easy to organize. And I think having to just show a really nice event, even with it being adapted to three years of all those names, and then giving full honor to them, is a bit challenging, but it was a really nice event, really good weather. So that, that made it even better to see everyone sitting there, you know, out on the grass and enjoying it.
Thank you, Councilmember Tate.
This was my first opportunity to participate in this program. And I think what was really powerful is being able to see the response from the families. It's like they had their own little rooter squad areas so that they could cheer them on as we were calling out their names. And it was a lot of names, but I enjoyed the reception following. There was beautiful, fresh flowers and decorations. The city did a splendid job putting it together. And so there were refreshments, and we had an opportunity to go out and talk to families and meet some of them personally and hear their stories up front. So I really enjoyed being part of it and appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is the Tulie River Tribal Council Meeting. This meeting was an invitation on behalf of the tribe to meet with the city. There were tribal representation, their legal representative, and Eagle Mountain Casino representatives. And from the city, it was Mr. Lawless, legal counsel, and myself. There were discussions with regard to the MOU, fire service, law enforcement, relocation project changes and phasing. No action taken during this meeting. Any information that would require any action would be brought to each respective councils. That concludes my report, unless I may have left anything out, legal counsel or Mr. Lawless. That pretty much was it. Thank you so much. And I believe you reported out already. Did you have, because you're saying San Joaquin Valley Special City Selection. You'd reported out on that one, didn't you?
I did. Yes, I did.
You reported, that's the one, I was gonna say, I think, you've got ahead of the game. Thank you so much. No, don't apologize. You were, you were good at doing that. Okay. Eastern Tulie Groundwater Sustainability Agency, Mr. Knight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Eastern Tulie GSA Board of Directors met on June 2nd, 2 o'clock via Zoom. The consent calendar consisted of approval of the minutes from the May 5th, 2022 meeting, and the May 19th special meeting, 2022. Also approved the continuing declaration of teleconferencing. So that will continue to perform via Zoom, and the agendas are posted on the Eastern Tulie GSA website. Action items that were considered was a letter of support for grant funding for USBR Water Smart Drought Response Program to Porterville Irrigation District. Letter was drafted in favor and support of receiving grant funds. And then also considered and approved was the draft Eastern Tulie GSA 2022-23 budget. Discussed outreach efforts, noting that the executive committee and stakeholder committee did not meet since previous meeting. However, the finance committee did meet to approve bills and propose the upcoming budget. That's all I have to report. Next meeting would be July 7th, 2022 via Zoom, 2 o'clock.
Thank you very much. That concludes all those reports, AB 1234. We now move on to reports. This is a time for all committee, commission, board reports, subcommittee reports, and staff informational items, but we don't have staff informational items. So we will move on to the consent calendar. All consent calendar items are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these matters unless a request is made, in which event the item will be removed from the consent calendar. All items removed from the consent calendar for further discussion will be heard at the end of scheduled matters. Counsel, how do you wish to proceed? We have items 1 through 15. If there are no conflicts or items to be pulled, I would like to make a motion to approve items 1 through 15 on the consent calendar. We have a motion.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. No discussion. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous for zero. Thank you. We will now move on to the public hearings. Mr. Lawless?
Thank you, Your Honor. There are two public hearings that have been scheduled for this evening. The first is the consideration of conditional use permit to establish a nursery at 180 Southeast Street. And Mr. Ridener will provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, Honorable Mayor and City Council. The city received an application requesting the approval of a conditional use permit, also known as a CUP, to establish the use of a nursery for Sunburst Packing Company located at 180 Southeast Street. On November 24th, 2021, the Project Review Committee, also known as PRC, reviewed the application that proposed the establishment of a nursery for Sunburst Packing Company. The subject site has a general planned land use designation and zoning standards for downtown mixed use. The use of a nursery may be established in the downtown mixed use or DMX zone district with the approval of a CUP. The Sunburst Packing Company is proposing to utilize the existing robust facility of approximately 53,700 square feet in order to establish a nursery with a potential for indoor and outdoor growing areas. The facility was previously used in the operation of packing facility for citrus and whatnot. The site plan submitted identifies indoor growing areas within the pre-existing buildings, specifically Building A with 13,400 square feet of main floor and 13,400 square feet of basement floor area. Building C with 4,800 square feet. Building D, 5,600 square feet of floor area. The site plan also includes Building B with approximately 10,400 square feet of area as an open loading area with, for the operation. Building E has 2,500 square feet, as well as Building F with 3,600 square feet are designated for storage areas. In addition to the plethora of pre-existing buildings that are being proposed to the repurposed for the use of a nursery, the applicant proposes the use of a newly constructed unpermitted shade structure as an outdoor grow area of approximately 49,050 square feet. The operation would consist of growing the plants in the identified outdoor growing area during the majority of the year, in which the plants would only be transferred to the indoor grow area in the winter months to prevent damage to the plants due to the cold weather. The shade structure requires a building permit and will need to be installed under the proper permit to meet all the requirements that currently adopted California Fire Code and California Building Code, as well as other applicable codes and standards. Following the PRC meeting, staff conducted a walkthrough of the facility on December 3rd, 2021, to gain a better understanding of the proposed use and layout of the facility. During the tour of the facility, staff noticed that unpermitted improvements had been made to the facility to the point of causing concern for structural integrity of the structure. On December 23rd, 2021, a first notice and order was issued requiring the facility be inspected by a structural engineer. On January 19th, 2022, staff was informed the facility was not safe to occupy. On January 21st, 2022, a second notice and order was posted stating that Building A was unsafe to occupy. On April 13th of 2022, staff met with the applicant and reviewed the requirements for the project to meet California Fire Code, California Building Code, and the Porterville Development Ordinance. On April 20th of 2022, a building permit application was submitted, and a building permit was issued on April 22nd of the same year to make a requirement, make the required temporary improvements that were outlined in the structural engineer's report provided by the applicant. On April 24th, 2022, temporary occupancy was issued for Building A, allowing for the use of a restroom and office in the building pending the submission and approval of a full set of plans, including a structural evaluation. The conditional use permit application that is requested to establish the use of a nursery within the DMX zone district. The draft conditions of the approval of the CUP provisions requiring the applicant to submit plans and apply for building permits to ensure that unpermitted improvements meet the current adopted California Fire Code, California Building Code, and Porterville Development Ordinance, including the shade structure utilized for the outdoor growing area. Additionally, the draft conditions of approval include provision for a semi-annual inspection by the building and fire departments of the facility, after which time staff can provide a counsel with a report of update following the inspections. The proposed project is exempt from sequel pursuit to 15301 existing facilities. The city's staff recommendation that city council adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit for Sunburst Packing Company, subject to conditions of approval. Staffs available for questions.
Any questions or afterwards? I'll open up the public hearing. It is 7:28. We will open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forth to speak on this item? Do we have anyone virtually?
No, Your Honor.
We have no one virtually. It is 7:29. We will close the public hearing, bring it back to council. Counsel, which direction would you like to go with this? I just have one quick question. I'll just make a quick question, because in this resolution, where you said including the shade structure utilized for outdoor growing, I drove by it today, and I just want to make sure it's that area, that's right, where they have all the plants, and it's right outside behind it, behind the packing house.
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. That was it. That was my only comment. Anyone else?
My comment is rehearing all these, the timelines and the efforts that they took to reach out to staff and follow the process and timelines is commendable. And it was a lot, and, you know, they got everything done. I just appreciate that. I don't know if the other council members have comments, but-
Did you have any comments, council members? Please, go ahead.
I know earlier that we talked in the, not the canopy, but a netting. Was that fireproof? Did they ever get back to you regarding that?
Councilmembers, so that's the same covering that I believe that the mayor is speaking of. That's the shade structure, as we call it. They have not submitted plans for that shade structure, for that material. That is included as a condition of approval. If they submit plans that are reviewed by the fire marshal and building department.
Thank you. Councilmember Tate, do you have any questions?
It just sounds like they've made a lot of progress since we first started working with them. So, thank you so much.
Okay, how does council wish to proceed? Bringing it back. Counsel?
I'll make, okay. I'll make a motion to adopt the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit for Sunburst Packing Company, subject to the conditions for approval.
We have a motion.
And I will second it.
And a second. No further discussion? Call for the vote. Passage unanimous for zero. We will now move on to the next public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor. Second public hearing this evening is considered, to consider the Public Health Goal Report, and Mr. Knight will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, humble mayor, council members. This is a time and place to conduct a public hearing regarding SB 1307, which has provisions to the California Health and Safety Code 116470B, C, and F, specifying that on July 1st, 1998, and every three years thereafter, public water systems serving more than 10,000 service connections shall prepare a report intended to inform the public concerning any public health goal that is exceeded. Established by Cal EPA's Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment, public health goals are non-enforceable standards, and non-action to meet them is mandated. The law also requires that where environmental health hazard assessment has not been adopted, public health goal for a constituent, that the water suppliers are to use the maximum contaminant level goals, MCLGs, adopted by the United States Environmental Protection Agency, US EPA. The public hearing is required for the purpose of accepting and responding to public comment on the report. The attached report is intended to provide information to the public in addition to the consumer conference report mailed out to each customer before June or the end of June. July 1st is the deadline for that mailing, and those have already went out to both water systems, the Jones Corner Water System and the City of Porterville Water System. The falling constituents was detected in the city Porterville drinking water sources at a level above the public health goal, however, did not exceed the maximum contaminant level goal. Tetrachloreethylene, known as PCE, public health goal for PCE is .06 parts per billion with an MCL of five parts per billion. Detection levels in six wells range from 0 to 2.63 parts per billion. These levels were below the maximum contaminant level at all times. The category with the health risk, the health risk associated with PCE is that people who drink water containing PCE above the maximum contaminant level throughout their lifetime could experience liver problems and may have an increased risk of getting cancer. State Division of Drinking Water says that drinking water which meets the MCL is associated with little to none of this risk and should be considered safe with respect to PCE. The numerical health risk for the public health goal of .06 parts per billion is 1 in 1 million. The numerical health risk for the MCL of five parts per billion is 8 in 100,000. Lead and copper, there is no MCL for lead and copper. It is instead judged by the 90th percentile value of all samples taken from household taps in the distribution system. They cannot exceed the action level of 15 parts per billion for lead and 1,300 parts per billion for copper. The maximum contaminant level goal for lead is .2 parts per billion, and the maximum contaminant level goal for copper is .03 parts per million. All of the sourced water samples for lead and copper in 2019 were less than the MCLG maximum contaminant level goal. Based on the samples taken from household taps in 2019, the 90th percentile value for lead was .01 parts per billion and .2 parts per million for copper. The City of Porterville's water system is in full compliance with the federal and state lead and copper rule. The category of health risk for lead and copper is gastrointestinal damage to kidneys, liver, and nervous systems of humans. Numerical risk information on lead and copper has not been determined by Cal EPA's Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, the state agency responsible for providing that information. The City of Porterville's water system complies with all the health-based drinking water standards and maximum contaminant levels required by the California Department of Health Services and the US EPA. Staff's recommendation is that council conduct a public hearing to solicit comments on the public health goal report. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. It is now 7:36. We will open up for a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to come forward? There is no one in the council chambers. Is there anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you. It is 7:36. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Counsel, how do you wish to proceed? Do you have any questions?
With all that reporting, so you're telling us that water is very safe to drink?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any other comment, any other questions? How do you wish to proceed?
Make a motion that we accept the report and as is given and presented.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. No further comment. Call for vote, please. Call for vote, please. Passage unanimous for zero. Thank you. We will now move on to scheduled matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. There are four scheduled matters before the council this evening. The first would be the consideration of appointment to the Animal Control Commission, and Ms. Hildreth will provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, mayor, members of council. As you know, the Animal Control Commission is an advisory body to the city council on matters concerning animal control services within the City of Porterville. It is comprised of five city residents representing a cross-section of the community who serve staggered four-year terms. At its last meeting, Commissioner Florenza Pizanis resigned from the commission. This has thereby created a vacancy with the term set to expire in September of 2024. Back in January, staff did receive a request for appointment from Mr. Sean Schwarzenberger, but at the time of the receipt of that application, there was no vacancy. So staff has confirmed with Mr. Schwarzenberger that he does have continued interest in serving, and he is also eligible to serve. So with that, the city, staff recommends that the city council consider the appointment of Mr. Sean Schwarzenberger to serve on the Animal Control Commission to a term expiring in September of 2024. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How does council wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion to approve Mr. Schwarzenberger's appointment.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous for zero. Thank you. We will now move on to item number 19.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item in order is to consider bid results for Island Annexation Area 457 Sewer Project, and Mr. Sanchez will provide that staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Lawless, mayor, members of council. On May 27th, staff received four bids for the Island Annexation Sewer Project, Area 457, which is bound by State Route 65 to the west, 190 to the north, and Chest Terrace Street to the east. The engineer's estimate was 1.3, I'm sorry, $1,384,036. The little bit presented by Bill Nelson's Construction of Fresno is $1,797,530, which is 413,494 higher than the engineer's estimate, so just shy of 30% higher, with an additional 10% each for construction contingency and construction management. The total construction cost comes back to $2,156,036. With the bid being over 10%, it's been council's policy to reject all bids, but with the current market, the chances of getting a more favorable bid are very small, and then the delays in re-advertising could jeopardize the funding requirements of the funding source. Funding for the project will come from the issuance of the 2019 sewer revenue bonds, better known as staff certificates of participation funds. The following four bids are shown, and staff has found a little bit acceptable. So with that, we'd recommend that city council award the Island Annexation Area 457 Sewer Project to Bill Nelson Construction in the amount of $1,797,530. Authorize progress payments up to 100% of the contract amount. Authorize a 10% construction contingency to cover unforeseen costs. Authorize an additional $179,753 for construction management, surveying, and quality control. And authorize the city engineer to negotiate construction surveying services with one of the firms as approved by a previous council member. I'm available for any questions.
I want to thank you for your report, Mr. Sanchez. How does council wish to proceed? Mr. Sanchez has laid out the staff recommendations. Do you have any questions to... Any comment?
No. We've actually been waiting for this to happen for a long time, so I make a motion for approval.
Thank you. We have a motion.
Second.
And we have a second, and that was for staff recommendations. No further discussion. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous for zero. Thank you. We now move on to item number 20.
Thank you, Your Honor. Next item in order is to consider the proposed fiscal year 2022/23 budget and setting of date of public hearing, consistent with the city charter. It's responsible to the city manager to submit for the city council's consideration of proposed budget for the coming fiscal year, and which provides an estimate of expenditures and revenues of the city departments for the ensuing year. There's a budget message that's been presented as part of this draft document, and I have a presentation that I'll review that kind of provides a summary of that. So the budget message will provide that overview or the overview of the budget and recommends and staff continues to recommend periodic review of budget targets and revision of expenditures to those targets when it's necessary. Generally, any overall reduction in any fund balances comes as a result of capital projects that are completed or modifications thereto, and by adoption of the budget, the council shall adopt a resolution, and that shall operate as the appropriation of funds to the amount for the purposes that are defined in the budget. All spending authority for the current 2021/22 fiscal year expires on June 30th. Therefore, a new budget needs to be established by July 1st according to meet payroll and other expenditures. The charter isn't specific as to the duration of the adoption, and so thus, any, with past council discussions, the council may authorize a budget adoption period less than the full fiscal year, and that is, there has been, and an example would be two years ago during COVID in 2020, when the budget adoption was pushed until October of that year. So that provides a general framework, and so the recommendation of staff is going to be that the council consider the proposed 2022/23 fiscal year budget and providing any direction for modifications and to schedule a public hearing on the proposed budget for Monday, June 20th, 2022. I presented, prepared this presentation as a summary of the budget message. So want to begin with what the council's priority projects have been, and as you had in your, in your priority project meeting and goal setting, the establishment of a new library, which is contained in the capital improvement program. There's an estimated cost of $32,500,000. Primary funding sources towards this are insurance proceeds and the state grant that was referenced earlier to be applied to, and staff is currently in negotiations for acquisition of property and development of this site. Local street improvements proposed for this coming year for construction, and I'll get into a little bit of this further, is $13,381,000 in construction, and I'll indicate what those street improvements are specifically. Another priority has been wastewater tertiary treatment, which the city's in the midst of at least a $12 million. I put $12 million here as part of the casino project. There was $2.7 million received as part of a grant through the state on the total estimated cost of about $15 million. So that work is underway currently right now on city property adjacent to the sports complex. A new community recreation center, which the city's received significant funding, approximately $8 million, under Prop 68 grant. We have an estimated total for that facility at $11 million, so primary funding through the Prop 68 grant. New animal shelter facility at $7.55 million, proposed to be primarily under ARPA, as well as other city funds set aside for that. Serious Accident Review Team, this is the report that was created in the after-action of the library fire. In this next year, there's $5 million in fire department projects, and I'll talk about that a little specifically in that breakdown. A million dollars from ARPA that has been set aside. It was a council priority to have a lit baseball field, which $1 million has been contained or proposed in this budget paid from ARPA, and this would be from the unrestricted side versus the restricted. Henry Street Park improvements continue to be appropriated at $300,000, which is insurance proceeds from the house fire that occurred there. The interim library facility, again, insurance proceeds are programmed, $336,000, which goes towards the facility lease, equipment, and books. The skate park shade structure and lighting appropriated $180,000, and that's at a Prop 80, excuse me, Prop 68 grant. State Route 65 and 190 community welcome signs continue to be appropriated at $70,000. We're working with Caltrans on that right now and how they have a program to be able to do gateway signs on Westfield, Overpass, as well as on the 190 Overpass over 65. In addition to that, working on the four Welcome to Porterville signage as part of the Westwood, Westwood and 190 roundabout. Sports Complex completion, and again, this is a de minimis number of 62,000. This was the remainder funds from the lighting project, from the football fields that were done. Certainly, any other lighting or other improvements of the sport complex would require additional resources allocated to that. We are proposing that the lit baseball field occur at the sports complex, so should that be council's direction to continue to pursue that, essentially, that'd be another million dollars towards those improvements. Westwood Bridge widening over the Tulie River, as has been previously reported, this is not one that FHW, Federal Highway Administration, is, has deemed eligible for federal funding, but we are continuing, as previously reported, to be looking at two new bridges, one at Newcombe and one at Prospect, and connecting to the airport area across the Tulie River, and then the city is working with the county, as previously reported, on the widening of the Olive Street Bridge for an additional two lanes to make it a four-lane bridge, which would have a $5 million contribution to that project that's currently under review right now. And then prior, other part of projects was evaluation of the American Rescue Plan Act So specifically on street projects, these are the projects slated for construction this coming fiscal year. So Villa Street is the largest, and this is between Olive Avenue and Henderson Avenue at almost $4 million, and this is just the street portions of this. This doesn't include the water sewer, purple pipe that would be installed as well as part of that project. This is just street construction costs, not accounting the utilities. Newcombe Street, Olive Avenue to Morton Avenue at almost $3 million. Henderson Avenue, Westwood Street to Patsy Street at 2.9. Grand Avenue between Fourth Street and Plano at about 1.2. Main Street, first phase between Putnam and Morton at 1.1. Montgomery Street, J to H at a little less than 100,000. And then these four streets previously identified as being priorities to the council currently under design and indicating what the appropriation and allocation of our funds towards those continued design. So these are the other capital projects. You just took an action in the item before about annexation sewer projects. We have a number of these, almost combined cost of $15 million, extending sewer into former county areas in and around Porterville. This is the second, I would say, second major project of this magnitude. I would say collectively, it's almost $30 million that's occurred over the last decade in accomplishing that. I spoke about Measure I and Fire Department, so fire station remodels are currently being analyzed and designed. There's a total capital cost of 3.3 million, which would go to provide additional rest areas as well as lengthen and widen the equipment bays for additional, so the firehouses to house additional firefighters and the bays to accommodate additional equipment. Tulie River Parkway Phase 3 will go to construction this year at about $2 million. That is a Measure R funded project. Veterans Park Trail Phase 2, this is the continuation of the concrete trail along Veterans Park, is a federally funded CMAC project, congestion mitigation and air quality project at 1.8 million. There'll be Measure R funds inserted in that program as well. The Mini Pitch Sports Complex behind Santa Fe Elementary School on city property with CDBG funds from the sale of the Heritage Center at 1.76 million in development. I spoke about the fire training facility, so a commercial fire prop. There is no commercial fire training opportunities in Tulare County. Those opportunities are out of county right now in Kern and Fresno, so providing that training opportunity in Porterville as well as for all of our mutually responding partners, the county, City of Tulare, and City of Biscilia, providing that opportunity in addition to upgrades to the facility itself, audiovisual. It's time for those things to be replaced as well, so it's 1.55 million of Measure I. I spoke about the lighted ball field at $1 million. Hayes Field Lighting, also from ARPA from the unrestricted side, is $750,000. And then, as was directed at your goal setting and priority projects of replacing the poles and netting on the driving range of the golf course, is $300,000 as an estimate. It's contained in there as well. Other major projects beyond those things are continuing to work on the East Porterville Water Connection Project and the delivery of the third well, the Aiken Well, as we come to know it. Have a sizable casino storm drain recharge basin that the state thankfully recently made the determination that is not a dam, so we'll be able to move forward with, move forward with the bidding of that project and its construction in support of the airport development. State Route 190 improvements, as I showed with you, Westwood Street right now is the primary focus of that. It's 90% plans. I would anticipate construction in this next, in the federal fiscal year, probably in the spring timeframe or summer of next year. Continued water infrastructure and sigma preparation, development of recharge basins, just a pretty robust work program, just in working with sigma in and of itself. Butterfield Stage Corridor improvements, this is using the 8 million in ATP funds for development in the downtown urbanized area of the former Santa Fe, or pardon me, Union Pacific Railroad right away, and so city council's authority authorized the design and construction oversight of that project previously. Rails and Trails improvements, grant received for 3.6 million for lighting and other amenities along the Rails and Trails in, to work in coordination with the Community Recreation Center in presenting a real activity area at Fourth Street and Henderson. And then the Airport Taxways Rehabilitation Project, there's a $5 million project that will be accomplished this next year, which is to have the taxways all brought up to FAA standards. They have radiuses that are not in, the airport was constructed during World War II, so it's bringing it up to current standards prior to the airport runway lengthening project being planned for. So speaking to the general fund, anticipated revenues for this next year, this is just general fund, is $32,791,000. Budgeted expenditures are 31, which provides a $960,000 difference, which after transfers leads to, right now, a projected budget surplus of $173,741. I would say this is a unique number. Usually, we're talking red numbers here, so do you want to mention that? But of course, this also does not account for any salary adjustments for, as you're coming out of contract with the number of your bargaining units as spending close session earlier this evening. This kind of gives you a general sense of general fund performance over the last five years and what being anticipated, so are looking at, in 2021, a balance, a budget balance surplus that offset the negative balance in the prior year of 1920. We are anticipating a large surplus this next year, which after, with a budget adoption consistent with the city's reserve policies, would fund its budget stabilization, its catastrophic emergency, as well as your other three reserve funds. catastrophic emergency, as well as your other three reserve funds accordingly. And I've got a breakdown here in this next slide of what that looks like. So right now, in general fund reserves is sixteen point five million. Equipment replacement is six point two million, and this is one of the, one of the great programs. I appreciate those that came before us in terms of depreciating all of your equipment so that it can be replaced, as we're now finding equipment to become very, very costly. So having sinking funds set aside that when it's time for equipment to be replaced, and it's proposed in your budget, about five million dollars in equipment to be replaced this next year. Not all of it out of the general fund, but the reason I incorporate that as part of general fund is that when you're evaluated, and so Standard and Poor's is going to be doing a shadow, shadow reading of the city, looking at its financial wherewithal. It does look at equipment replacement, even though that is dedicated funds, it is still considered general fund monies in reserve. Budget stabilization, as I spoke about, is fifteen percent of budgeted expenditures, which with further adoption would have further funds deposited to it. Catastrophic Emergency Fund, and this is one that, and I brought this up at your capital project, it's based on a ten percent of budgeted expenditures. Right now, there's more than three million there, and I can't tell you candidly that that's the best use of funds, especially with some of the catastrophic emergencies the city has endured over the last two years, which you've not, in large part, had to, had to access that. So I, we'll be talking about in the next item, looking at establishing another reserve fund, which would be a rate stabilization fund for pensions. It may be something for the council to consider as part of the budget, looking at revising its, its reserve policy and how funds, when, when, when in surplus are, are put in funds for later use, which is the next three. And proportionally, these each receive funding, which is your infrastructure improvement, which is about a million deferred, facility deferred maintenance at seven hundred and fifty thousand, and capital improvement at eight hundred and sixty-four. There are some proposed new positions. There's an administrative assistant and code enforcement. I want to kind of join that with code enforcement officers. So as part of the, as part of the cannabis agreements, the council's direction was to have code enforcement serve as the regulatory authority of cannabis dispensaries, which we have one that is, one that is actively doing tenant improvements right now and awaiting its state, it's waiting the state to sign the agreement. And there's a huge backlog at the state on, on these activities. But one of the primary, as a result of the excise tax, the seven percent excise tax collected on cannabis would go towards code enforcement and administrative assistant to help with the record-keeping and letters and things of that nature, so that the officers could be in the field more. So of the proposed new positions, the administrative assistant and the code, one of the code enforcement officers is from the general fund, but as of today, it does not have a revenue attached to it until the dispensary is open. I just want to clarify that. The other code enforcement officer, there's two there, one of them is indicated to come from Measure I. An assistant are with responsibilities, helping with the fire marshal and helping with weed abatement, pretty extensive, and I can tell you, Chief, Chief Cogburn would speak to that as well. Adding new position as assistant city engineer, given the, just the plethora of projects that are in front of the city and providing additional engineering oversight in the engineering and projects department. A new chief financial officer, actually, this would be a re-establishment of the chief finance, financial officer. I'm sad to say, this is beginning to be the signaling that Ms. Bemis may be considering retirement, so bringing somebody on to serve as chief financial officer and to work alongside Maria, and so that she knows as intimately the city's finances as she does, so that they're prepared, prepared in the event that, of her retirement. Clerical assistant in administration, we have a part-time clerical assistant right now in administrative department, and this would make that position full-time, and really focusing right now on, on our digital imaging of documents and making them available, laser fishing and things of that nature, so that making more of our documents readily accessible. Police Department has requested a crime analyst position, being able to better utilize the information and data that's being generated by all the new technology through our CAT arm, RMS system and other GIS systems that are at hands of law enforcement, so an analyst position to, to begin doing predictive policing and looking at crime trends and things of that nature. Information technology technician, this would be more of get their hands dirty, help with more, I would say more of the every, you know, the things that we don't want Mr. Williams worrying about, which is restarting computers, passwords, you know. So having a technician help desk, if you will, just to kind of do the, the more simpler tasks and allow Mr. Williams and those that are more skilled to do the data, the larger data and security of our systems that they are responsible for. I spoke about weed abatement, and so given that the city's self-performing, it's weed abatement in lieu of consulting, contracting services, adding an additional perks maintenance worker too, to the weed abatement program, which also benefits city with many of the trails and things of that nature and city properties for maintenance. And then the hiring in the police department of a social worker, and this would be from ARPA funds on the restricted side, and this would be to, to begin with a limited term, I'll call it a, name escapes me that I want to use, but evaluating, using a non-sworn personnel in dealing with critical incidents with mental health, and not just, not just those experiencing homelessness, but also those that are having situations that having somebody in a non-sworn capacity being able to, you know, assistant evaluation and, and being more, more engaged, I would say, in, in, with those that are experiencing emotional and mental instability issues. So those are proposed new positions in this budget, variety of funding sources between general fund. Assistant city engineer, for example, is partially general fund, but then also as they work on projects, costs, costs to those projects as they are working through design and things of that nature. Certainly, chief financial officer would be from the general fund as part of that training. Any questions on new positions? It's approximately five hundred and fifty thousand collectively in those positions.
No questions, but I'm excited to see the more code enforcement officers we need. Need them desperately. I've been begging for those for some time now.
That would bring a total of four full-time code enforcement officers, with one serving as the fire marshal as well. So the budgetary considerations, at your next meeting will be a report on the Parks Impact Fee and kind of the sordid history to where it came from and where it is. There is refuse rate study, a refuse rate study, a sewer, storm drain rate study, a water rate study, all currently being evaluated and looking at, so I would notice it doesn't need to be a part of the budget, but I want you to be aware of it as part of this next fiscal year. These will be budgetary considerations, looking at all of those rates, and what are the best, what are the inputs to that that dictate those rates. Pension funding policy, and that's an item that we'll be speaking about next, and as I referenced earlier, is beginning to set funds aside now towards making additional payments and, and addressing the unfunded, unfunded accrued liabilities. The time much is on mural, there's a letter that's been received from the Porterville Mural Committee requesting consideration of forty thousand dollars being appropriated to repair the mural. I guess the repairs that were done to it previously were incorrect, so, and wanting to have it, and this isn't going to be the repainting, this is just to repair it, so it can be repainted, probably looking, on the other side of the mural repair, looking at a repainting probably being twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars itself. The artist that painted this, this mural was the same that painted the mural in Tulare that's on Mooney Boulevard at Veterans, which it was damaged recently. Wind tore it off its foundation and, and into Mooney Boulevard, so both of the murals this gentleman painted, both are, are subject to, and he was getting ready to retire, and now he's looking at both, both large-scale murals needing to, being needed to repair. I also wanted to add in here Mighty One Ninety, and the Mighty One Ninety Committee that's been meeting, we learned today that the county of Tulare is going to appropriate twenty, or it is expected that they'll be appropriating twenty thousand dollars as part of their budget, so their county is going through the same budgetary considerations that you are. It's proposed by staff, county staff, that the county appropriate twenty thousand dollars to the Mighty One Ninety Committee effort of promoting southeastern Tulare County. And so, the city council previously had appropriated fifteen thousand, which there's about six thousand remaining or so from that appropriation, which has been establishing the website for Mighty One Ninety, doing social media, establishing that brand, and so something for the council to consider would be Mighty One Ninety funding in this next budget, which would be, I would recommend commiserate with at least whatever the county contributes towards that effort. They're also look, and where this is coming from is they, the county contributes twenty thousand to the Sequoia Tourism Council, STC as it's called, which the city is a partner in that effort as well. The city contributes thirty-five hundred dollars to the STC, but under Mighty One Ninety, specifically, there is a county appropriation of twenty thousand towards that, and so consideration of budget adoption would be to, I would say we could report then as to what the county appropriation is. We expect it to be twenty thousand, but the recommendation to match that as well. And that's kind of an overview. Happy to answer any questions or staff's available to answer any other questions at positions or, or, and I, and I know I haven't even, I probably, I probably covered sixty percent of the work program.
Need to turn this on.
No questions, just always love hearing about the projects. I know it's a lot of funding, but also a lot of different types of funds being brought in. Thank you for resharing about the measure funds, where those are going, and I feel like a lot of our projects are, are just quality-of-life projects for the, for the city and the community, all the recreational amenities, you know, just touching on the different things with the recreational, like the golf course, the trails, the ballfields, and, you know, the water, the streets. I feel like we've touched a lot there on all these different items, just really exciting to hear and, and be a part of the planning and process.
If I can make one more comment, I know it's in the report, but I would also, the, this, what the budget that you have before you was presented to the transactions and use tax oversight committee, we call TWO Talk. They did consider this, and they didn't have any, any issues, and we've done that as a means of trying, trying to avoid any conflict as an after-action committee, that they're not aware of any expenditures as they're, as they are presented to the council, so try to avoid headaches before they need to be, before they are inflicted.
I want to thank you for that, because I did see it on the report, that it was presented to them as well. Counsel.
I have to give credit to staff. I mean, there's a lot of money that's been spent, but most of it's grants and from different programs, and guys done a good job of going, reaching out and finding that stuff to, to enhance our community and particularly the recreation programs that we have for our young people and adults. Donnie and his staff and entire staff have done a good job of going out and getting that money and, you know, a nice new park and, and an area for, for recreation and playing, and they received, you know, eleven million dollars, you know, that's, it's nothing to sneeze at, and they're hard to get, get their competitive grants, so.
And there are other grants that are outstanding. We had a site visit from the state, I believe, two weeks ago on the, on the mini pitch we had submitted for another state grant, which I think we had requested another couple, I think, two and a half, and have to defer to Mr. Moore on that. We did have a, Donnie, you want to talk about that visit and the amount?
That's two point seven five million for the mini pitch project over there that would join the CDBG funds that we'll be getting, which is about one point five or so, so that would, that would be a four million dollar that we have for that area. So we expect to hear this summer whether we receive that or not, and the state also gave us a site visit for the site on Fourth Street that would be for some shade structures for all the new amenities at the park, and that would be about a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Very good. Good job, Donnie.
In addition to that, there'll be an ATP application prepared, I don't want to misspeak, Jason, in the, in the next ATP cycle, is there?
Corrected, the application is due on the fifteenth.
Right. So there's another application that'll be being submitted to the ATP. In addition to that, there'll be the ATP application for, as part of the city and tribe plan that's being developed right now. It's a two-part, it's for the Tule River Tribe, it has two areas of focus in the plan. There is the airport, or the airport area specifically, sports complex and the, and casino resort as a, as a focus, and then secondarily for the tribe is on reservation, so, and there will be an application, there is an application being prepared that'll be submitted for, for improvements. It's a, it's a new pedestrian bridge over the Tule River. That is what's, if you're familiar with the Swinging Bridge, this would be to replace the Swinging Bridge and provide better connectivity, thank you, community ahead, community and not connectivity between, over the Tule River, between the Million Dollar Bridge and the other bridge. It's got a, is it the old bridge? Is the Million Dollar Bridge is to the east? What's the, well, there's a Swinging Bridge, so anyway, it will, it will help with connectivity, yeah, and it would be aligned between the Justice Center and the Administrative Center, so, and its school, so.
Councilmember Tate, do you have any comment?
No.
Thank you. I don't have any comment. I just know that when I saw and I received and I looked at the message in the summaries, there's a lot that have gone into it, and particularly, you know, with the measures, and I was pleased to see immediately that it had been, it had gone to TWO Talk and the other, the grants, and all departments are involved in grants, and that's what's amazing, because they're always looking for something, and it's all departments that are doing it. You know, I see the look on your face, because, yeah, I mean, you guys have the wherewithal to, and the enthusiasm to get those funds for your projects. You're to be commended.
Mayor, if I might, excuse me, if I might add, you know, I've worked for three, four different cities, and all their staff didn't go out like Porterville staff to get that, and trust me, I have to commend you guys for doing that and bringing in all those, those dollars to, to, and to help our community and to make it better. We have a very good staff, and people don't realize that, and we're understaffed, and we're still outperforming most, most cities our size and, and a couple larger ones.
And on the committees that we serve, on the dais and staff attends, there's always the discussion about the allocation of funds and disbursements as to how much each city can apply for, and this city has never hesitated not to make that application, so that's where a lot of them do come in, and I'm going to thank you for that. How does council wish to proceed? Because there is a recommendation. Because there is a recommendation on the table here, I mean, on the staff report.
So I guess just the question, is there any, is there anything we didn't include at the direction of council? Or anything that needs to be modified? Happy to take any, any direction for, for your next meeting and then, and then certainly the action, the only action asked of council would be to, to schedule the public hearing for, for June 20th.
I didn't have any changes. I didn't have any changes.
I went through the entire budget and, you know, being.
I looked at it.
Being very familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
It was.
How does counsel wish to proceed?
That we set, you know, the public hearing and the June 20th meeting.
Oh, we scheduled the meeting. We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Is there any further discussion on the dais? She said there is none. Call for the vote. Passage unanimous, 4-0. Thank you.
I'm pretty excited that we're in the, we're not in the red this year.
Right.
For the first time since I've been working for the city, we have.
Well, yeah, that's why I just, just recognize that's before any salary adjustments as you come out of contract. So the, so the answer that they, they, they're still going to have to be good financial stewardship. Because there's going to be, there's going to be increases. There's been sizable increases across the county, so.
But even with that, I mean, at this time, we still be in the red.
Right. I, I do agree. And I would say the commitment remains that there'll be a strong fiscal stewardship as, as always.
Okay.
I do want to say thank you to Maria Bemis, Luisa Zavala, who helps in the CIP preparation, a lot of work that goes to that, Mike Knight and his, his folks for the enterprises. So a lot of moving parts in the, in the back and whatnot.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the next item.
Thank you, Honorable. Last item this evening is a consideration of a draft pension policy. And I'll, I'll ask the other members of the city, internal city or city internal audit committee for any backup in this as a lot of, the mayor, the vice mayor, finance director, city attorney, myself, Mr., Mr. Taylor, I asked him to participate, but he, he's on a cruise, so he's, unless he's, unless he's dialed in from Alaska. I don't, I don't think he's in. So, but beginning back in November of last year, the city's internal audit committee began working with its, its municipal advisors. And you have with us this evening Bud Levine, Rob Pankrats and Nikki Tolman, who have been the team that we've been working with in the review of this policy. And, and we'll speak to the validation suit in a bit with regards to pension obligation bonds. But we're working with the municipal advisors in analyzing the city's pension status and addressing long-term funding sustainability and what, what's called the UAL, which is the unfunded accrued liabilities. And, and that's what many agencies are, are facing, which is the, at varying levels of what their liabilities are in the long-term for all of their actives and retired. And then what the funding is for that to be 100%, because that's what you're aiming for, is that for, that the dollars are on, on deposit for, for that. How realistic is that? That's not a, that's the goal. The, but generally speaking, and you'll, you will read of some agencies that have been unable to, and what you don't want to be is in a, in a system where you are not able to sustain it. And you've had agencies that have defaulted on their, on their PERS. And, and what ends up happening is, is that, that, those pensions are then frozen at whatever the funding level it is at the time it happened. So if the, if, if the funding level of, of an agency is 60%, then whatever the PERS pension is, is reduced to that amount, 60% of whatever that would be. And obviously that brings a lot of, a lot of pensioners out to, you, you've seen that in, there was a lot of clamor up in Stockton, when Stockton was looking to potentially default on its PERS. It ended up changing its medical plans. They had lifetime medical there. But CalPERS is considered a, your pension is considered a hard debt. It is, it is not one that can be disposed of in bankruptcy. So it is, and so what you're wishing to avoid is, the alternative is, is that you default, you're, you're out and then your pensioners pay the, employees pay the, the consequence of that. So just a little background to that. So similar to most public agencies in California, the city is a participant in the, in the California Republican Employees Retirement System or CalPERS as it's called. And we're in what's called the pooled retirement. So the state has its own system and then you have city agencies that elect to participate as most do. And so we participate what's called the pooled retirement system. So given a variety of factors, including there was retroactive benefits granted to employees beginning in 2000, prior to my joining the city. And I can't speak to what happened in the, back in the day when, when the city's contract, actually, this is a, Bud Levine and I have had this conversation about going back historically on when the city joined PERS in, you know, 70 something or 60 something, probably, I don't know Bud, that, that becomes a question for us, for.
For another day, right.
Yeah, yeah. Barely have time to manage the, what's in front of us, much of what happened back then. But we know what we have today. And, and it is, and it is the UAL. And, and there's a number here. So with, if you were to go to CalPERS right now, you'll find that our UAL by last year's assessment, I think it was over 50 million. Given the returns that CalPERS made in the prior year, which was almost 22%, that UAL has drawn down to $43 million. And that's a combination of public safety and miscellaneous. There's, the city actually has six plans within, I know this gets pretty granular, but it has six plans. It has three in public safety, three in miscellaneous, because you have your, what's called your classic employees. And then the city has actually always tried to be, at least in the time that I've been with it, tried to be proactive as it's related to this. So there was a second, there was a second tier before the state developed what's called PEPRA. So as a result of that, if we had known that PEPRA was going to become a reality a couple of years later, we probably wouldn't have developed a second tier because we have a very small number of employees that are in that, that middle tier. So within both our public safety and our miscellaneous, there are three plans. What are, those that are what are considered to be classic or long time, you have those that are in that tier two. It was that short window of time where the city had something different. And then PEPRA, which is when the state established what all the, what all the plans would be uniformly. In addition to paying normal costs, so as a percentage of payroll, you have what, what does this pension cost you today? And you have to pay that and that's a factor of payroll. You have additional payments that you have to make towards that unfunded liability and those are, and those are done amortized over a 24-year period of time. So currently, right now, for this year, just the UAL payment. So this isn't the percentage of payroll that goes towards PERS. But the additional UAL payment is, is 4.54 million for this current year. And for next year, it will go up to 4.95 million. Now, it, the way that it's amortized is it goes up, it goes up and there's a, there's a chart that kind of shows this. It's kind of a, it goes up and it will continue to increase for a couple of years and then it will be on a downward trend as, as it's forecasted. To address UAL, agencies have been adopting policies and considering a variety of financing options. And the, and the committee spent initial time developing a pension funding policy. So before looking at this, what is the best approach to a funding policy? And that's where I was remarking about. And there's been a draft that's been presented to you. A lot of time was spent in development of that. Actually, as Maria and I've spent some additional time talking to the, about this. We proposed changing one of the words and I'll, I'll speak to that in a, in a moment. And Bud might want to chime in or Nikki, whether or not that, but it's a shall to a may as we talk about Section 125 plans, but.
115.
Or 115, pardon me.
Right.
Got my numbers mixed up.
That's all right.
But the draft policy that requires that it make actually determined contributions each year and sets that target at 100%. There's, there's some argument whether or not you should actually be at 100% because if you, if you become overfunded, then actually you're, you're kind of in a situation where you, you're, you're, you're not putting your resources to best use, similar to what I was mentioning about the emergency catastrophic fund. If you don't, if you don't have use for the funds, it's best not to be overfunded. So it's a fine balance of just trying to stay at 100% or beneath. And the best way to do that is to try to have a, a policy that manages what those contributions look like. So that, that's been presented to you. What it also stipulates in, is that there be additional payments, it's called additional discretionary payments. So it built in the budget that was presented to you was an, an additional half a million dollars. I would essentially call it like paying down your mortgage. So based upon what the payroll, payroll complexion is of the city, which is out of a half a million, about 350,000 would be from the general fund and 150,000 would come from the enterprises. That additional half a million dollars would go to, towards the UAL in terms of helping pay that down because it's that 6.8% that PERS is charging on that money that you're, you know, and it just, it just, it's every year. So to what extent can you whittle that down in knowing that's your interest rate? And I said, that's what, that gets, that's what gets into the conversation about pension obligation bonds, which in the policy that you have speaks about that being a possibility with certain restrictions. And one being that the, the difference between an issuance of the bond and it needs to be at least 200 basis points or 2% less than whatever the, the discount rate is of PERS. So right now it's 6.8%. There's still some downward pressure on that. There's some, when, when PERS most recently, so in the last five years, it's gone from seven and a half to 6.8%. There's, there was some conversation about it going even, even lower. Some economists were even recommending 6.2% and these are based on 20-year projections of performance going forward. But the policy dictates this. It says that there, you know, in the event the pension obligation bonds would be issued, that there has to be at least a 200 basis point difference between what the, what the discount rate is of PERS and what the, and what that bond issuance would be. So the draft policy's been presented and, and as I indicated, Maria and I, in further discussion of it, talked about the Section 115. It talks about it shall be created, which would then put those funds, any funds in that would be pushed in, put into trust that would only be used then for any pension obligations as opposed to a reserve policy, which has funds there, but with an action of council could move those funds should there be a project, so. I've talked quite a bit and tried to, try to provide that, the information. So the recommendation before the council this evening is to consider the draft policy that's been prepared, pension, pension funding policy. Maria and I would recommend just the change of one word from shall to, to may, as the other provisions are. And, and that it authorized a validation suit. So what, so what happens is, is that a, the courts, a judge is going to review the, the city's finances and they're going to provide a validation. Does it make business sense for this to happen, for it to issue long-term debt? And this gets, this gets to restrictions that you have when the issue of the bond is larger than the, than the, than the allocation to pay it, I guess is what I would say. So if you're going to, if you're going to issue $40 million, as we just saw in the, in the budget, if you're going to issue 40 million in, in pension obligation bonds, how are you going to, can you, and I, I would say this is why the shadow rating also comes into, into bearing, not only from a financing standpoint, but also talk about the financial wherewithal of the city if it were to go to market on any financing.
You know, in a smaller scale, the same as you would purchase a house or.
Exactly. The, the city was last evaluated in 2015 and just given the current, it, right now, everything needs to be done annually. Even a rating that you had two years ago is no longer, it really needs to be done annually, so. And that was an action already approved by the council in pursuing that.
And our ratings should be pretty good, I would think.
So there were, the last rating in 15, there was an A, it was an A-plus upgraded to a double A minus. And so based on that, it, and that was in, Bud, do you want to?
Yeah, I just want to say, I think that upgrade was because we, we obtained bond insurance at the time because we thought we were doing a public deal. The bond insurance gave it the double A. The underlying was an A-plus.
Right. So.
I feel comfortable, I'm pretty comfortable looking at the latest numbers you have. I'd be very surprised if we don't get the double A this time, so.
And, and that was the same shared by standard reports.
Right, exactly.
Very good.
I want to make the comment because the draft policy was taken to the audit committee and it went paragraph per paragraph. And a lot of the questions were answered and reported out at previous meetings to get to where we are now on this policy. And as I reread it once again, what I like that this policy does include transparency. The funding of the pension plan shall be transparent to vested parties, including plan participants, annuants, the city council and residents. And in order to achieve this transparency, the following information shall be made available in a manner that is consistent with the California Public Records Act. So it's stated on there, so there is something in the policy to that regard. And with the 115, that was explained to us during the meetings that we had and reported out at city council meetings under the AB 1234. The funding, I don't have, I just want to say thank you because there was a lot of time given to this policy to get it to where we are here in draft form for the council, for full council. And that's pretty much, those are pretty much my comments. I don't know about you, Vice Mayor.
I feel confident about what's been presented. I feel that the group and discussion, we had some very extremely competent partners with us, helping us, guide us through a lot of the dialogue and, and building the policy and, and then having our, our finance manager in there. Maria was very helpful to guide us along too with the finance pieces and even questions on that. So yeah, I feel, I feel really good about what we've come up with. And it has been a lot of work and a lot of time and, and discussion. And, and then even learning, you know, for, for some of us on the whole aspect of it, so.
Okay. Does counsel have any other questions? Do we have anything else that you want to, any questions of Mr. Levine? He's on.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I've worked on a lot of pension policies in various cities and with various committees, some called finance committees. Your internal audit committee was the hardest working committee that we have encountered and very thorough. They put us through all of the questions that they had and, and I think it took almost eight months by the time we were through and going through this to craft this policy. And I'm particularly proud of what you, you did and that I was participation in it. And also want to say just in another, another comment, because we were involved in the issuance of the sewer bonds and the water enterprise bonds, to hear those projects being brought up tonight for approval to move forward. We also have experience with cities where we go through the efforts and, and good bond issues are made and the money sits there for a long, long time, sometimes even in violation of what the requirements are. And it's nice to see a city that's really taking advantage of, of all of the aspects of that and getting these projects out and, and pursued.
Well, it was a pleasure working with you. However, we had the people that were brought to the table there to ask more questions than needed. And Maria, I know you're on there, but I want to thank you for your input and to make a recommendation on a word even to this day. I mean, thank you for being thorough. That's where I'm going with it.
Can I, and I want to just add an additional comment. So by, by authorizing the filing of a pension obligation bond validation suit does not, does not authorize it being proceeding. You're just, the only action you would be taking is for the courts to review it and to come back with, with its legal opinion. And then, and then you would have the determination, you know, and part of that is also.
Preparatory.
It's all preparatory. It's all preparatory. The anticipation is that would be concluded in the October timeframe.
Hey, John, one clarification. What the court actually does is they give a judgment that in their judgment, the city can issue from their general fund pension obligation bonds. And then from that point, we would come back to the council with an actual proposal based on the market conditions. And I'll let Nikki maybe talk a little bit about the market and anticipation for pension obligation bonds. But at that point, we would come back for approval. And there we would make a very full presentation so that everybody could see how the pension obligation bonds work in comparison to the CalPERS requirements and what the anticipated savings are going to be. And then you'll have real numbers on which to make the decision to move forward. The action tonight just lets you move forward to be in position to do that when the market is appropriate. And then we could move rather quickly to capture the rates that are available.
Thank you. That does clarify for some. Okay. How does council, if there are no other questions, how does council wish to proceed?
I'll make a motion that we consider the draft pension funding policy and draft resolution and have them proceed with the blunt head in getting our ratings and bringing it back to us with the proposals if we're eligible to do so.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Second. And a second.
And before you vote, I just want to clarify, that was for authority for approving the policy and proceeding with the validation action. And then that also includes that small change, as noted in the section, on page two, where the city may maintain, okay, Section 115 trust.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, a clarification. No further discussion. Let's call for the vote. Passes unanimous, four zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, council, and thanks Bud, Rob, and Nikki.
Thank you very much.
Good to, we'll see you again.
Absolutely. We'll see you in August or September, whenever we're back.
We'll see you again. Thank you. You have a good evening.
You too. Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll continue the council meeting. We're going into oral communications. Is there anyone that would like to come forth in oral communications?
Gail Knuckles, 13144, vote 216. I thought it was kind of sad the other day that Supervisor Townsend had a town hall meeting with citizens of Porterville attending, and not one city council people were there to participate. I thought it was kind of sad.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come up? Do we have anyone on virtually?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, then we will move on to other matters. Councilmember Tate?
This has been a really busy evening. We've accomplished quite a bit. When we were talking about these grants, they're very challenging. So we've got a lot of talent in this city. We really do. I've been, I've had to write them before, and it takes a whole lot of knowledge. And so I'm very pleased with all of the work that we've done as far as our funding goes. As far as not attending that town hall meeting, I really didn't, I didn't receive an invite. I probably would have attended if I'd known that we were, the expectation was there.
I don't think any council member received an invite to the town hall.
We were not invited. We were not invited. It was a county town hall meeting by the supervisor.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Stowe?
I do regret that I missed the flag ceremony. That's one of the primary events that I like to attend. But I did go out the morning prior to the event and to look at the staging, and it was beautifully decorated. And it looked like it was anticipating a great crowd. But I do appreciate what Donnie, Amy, and other city employees did out there, made it look really, really nice and ceremonial. It was a great, I'm sure it was a great day. Like I said, I just hate that I had to miss it, but other priorities came up.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We missed you. We missed you.
Actually, I saw the names I had to read, and I said, I'm not going to attend.
I saw, that's what I thought. No, I'm just kidding. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Councilmember Stowe, for bringing up the event and looking, you know, one of the things that I got to do also was drive down the streets to see the banners. And obviously, not all the streets because there's over, is it 800 now? 852 now, which I do like to drive around town and see the various banners and then recognize a lot of friends, family, and just people that were either friends of my dad or myself, and people that we grew up with or their parents. So everything was really beautiful. And even going through, you know, really early in the mornings or really late in the evenings and just seeing all the lights and all the banners up and down the street, it's still really beautiful. One of the other things that was mentioned at the event and that has been brought up, I thought I had this great idea in one of the committee meetings, and I said, you know what would be really cool? Is if we had this map that people could log on and see, like if I had a family member I wanted to see somewhere, and we could go there, and it would tell us exactly where that is. And Amy said, hey, she was really respectful, and she said, we do have that, but you know, it's kind of buried in the website. So she took us all there and showed us on the website where you could go type in a name, and it'll show you exactly where that banner is located, which street and all that, and what number it is and things like that. So that was really cool, and I appreciate Mr. Lawless bringing that up at the event because, you know, even if people come travel here, which a lot do, I've heard even that day, they can see where their family members are located and actually go drive by. And I know a lot of people take photos by their family's banners. So that was a good thing to add to the event, just mentioning that on the website. The other thing I just want to acknowledge, it's getting exciting to me to hear more about the library and moving forward with the plans, even the temporary library. I think that as you hear all these virtual services, which I think we're all getting tired of, but for some reason, there continues to be a great deal of participation with the virtual services, both English and Spanish. And I'd like to say that, I know it seems like we're spending, you know, a lot of money on temporary library and services, but I think it's for a good reason. I think our community wants it and needs it. I think the children appreciate it. I think it's one thing through COVID and then coming out of COVID and that really rough time on all of us, that it has been really greatly appreciated. And a lot of it has been done with insurance funds that have been provided specifically for that reason. Others have raised money, and then there's been grants. And one of the things that I think is really cool too, that I've tried to get modeled after that for other programs, is the mobile, the little mobile library. I think that's been a really great feature during this time. So I just want to mention that and looking forward to the opening of the temporary library. I also want to say, I appreciate the comments earlier about the supporting the police and fire. And, you know, I feel personally, I try to pull anything positive that I can that could be means to some type of solution or things that we have to make decisions on. So I try to listen to those comments that we could work off of or build off of for our services. And, you know, the talk about taking care of the fire and the police, I think that's something that's always on our mind and on our plate and throughout the agenda. And I think it kind of shows even in the budget presentation with some of the training facility and planning around that and adding the personnel that's so needed to provide the officers the support that they need. So, you know, just want to continue to hear more about that and be able to share more of that with the public as we go on. The last thing I want to say is I live up by Granite Hills, so the graduations that go on there, I see them ongoing, just like I'll have the luxury of seeing fireworks for about a week straight too. But I do want to say, it is honestly one of my favorite times of the year. And part of it is seeing all the different photos and all the different celebrations. And I mean, there's graduations from pre-K through adult school, high school, higher education, and all these different levels, and just all these unique, I guess, acknowledgements and ceremonies. And even the ones that we have, you know, on the tribe or with higher education for tribal students, you know, those are unique as well because they're kind of milestones in people's lives. So I'm seeing all that go on right now at this time of year, and that's really us leading into summertime. So I just want to say congratulations to all the graduates, all the ages, but also the families because they wouldn't have made it there without all of you and your support. And I will leave it there for the evening.
Thank you very much. I want to say thank you to the code enforcement. Two days before the military banner ceremony, I went through Main Street, and on every tree in town, there were flyers that were posted, two or three on each tree on both sides of Main Street. And that was done right before the military banner ceremony. And I'm grateful that they were immediately pulled down because they had no business being there and stapled to all the trees, a minimum of two, a maximum of three per each tree. So I want to say thank you to that because the military banner ceremony was very seamless, and it was breathtaking. I look forward to it every year, and I was excited that the Vice Mayor called out my late husband's name because we purchased his banner in 2020. And the effect is so different than what we did virtually to be in person, and just a happiness, and it was a momentum. So I would just say, there was that happening before it, and then we had the banner, but I'm grateful to all the flyers that were pulled down. And many of you know Dalton Rogers. And on May 29th, well, May 28th was his ordination into priesthood. And on May 29th, he served his first mass at St. Holy Cross. And it was something that was very beautiful. It was two hours, and it was enchanted like back in the Roman times. And to watch him serve and to gift his parents at the very end with certain gifts that they would take on to their journey of eternal life was just wonderful because parents made him who he is and the decision he made. I just wanted to share because many of you knew who he was and the journey and the path that he took. And it was just wonderful to talk to him and be a part of that celebration with him.
I used to tease him saying that he's going to be a president someday. And then he went into priesthood, I said, well, maybe you'll be the pope someday now.
Well, in the reception that was given for him, the seminarians or those who were involved, they actually made a song for him. And it was just, you know, from being a government person in politics to where he ended up and he'll never have to worry about a budget or anything to that regard. So it was a good, warm felt reception, and it was good. But that's all I have to say. Mr. Lawless?
Thank your honor. The fire department badge pinning, I want to say thanks to Chief Cogburn for that. He did a tremendous job. And it was wonderful to see Mr. Jones attend and was very kind and had an opportunity to spend time talking with him afterwards. And just, he was very appreciative and got a chance to meet the firefighter that went through the academy under the scholarship in his son's name. So it was just a really great, in that moment for him. And I just want to say thanks to Chief Cogburn, who did just a great job in that event. And we've got more coming, so we got those four of the six, and then there'll be others that come as well. I want to say thanks to Donnie and Amy and all of the Parks and Leisure staff for all of their work on the military banner stuff. I had a number of people come up to me, didn't know me, and just said, you know, we have something similar to this in our community, but it's nothing like this. And they, it's, I would say, become one of those hallmark events of our community. So just want to say thanks, doing just such a tremendous job on that. Jason and I went to LAFCO last week, which the sphere amendment on South of Gibbons was considered and approved unanimously by LAFCO, which also included the annexation of the Central Mutual neighborhood as part of that consolidation. So just thought I'd report that. Congratulations to Manashi High softball. I swear we were going to get there. But thanks to Councilmember Stowe for all of his work on that. Upcoming this next week, the tribe has its beam raising ceremony tomorrow for its Wildlands, New Wildlands Fire and USDA building. So look forward to being there tomorrow, K-Jug tomorrow. And I'm told the artist was a former American Idol winner, season 19 apparently, so someone that has some noteworthyness. And then the mayor will be celebrating a birthday this month.
This whole month.
Okay. Yeah, that's why I said month.
This whole month, just the whole month.
And I want to, I need to talk to Chief Castello about this, but the Porterville Fire Department was formed on June 9th of 1890. So on June 9th, it will be recognizing its 142nd year in existence. So I was trying to find, and I'd be curious to see. The fire department, the fire department was formed on June 9th, 1890. And there's a really great history of the department and done by Jeff Edwards that Dave Lapierre had given to me, and I've gone back and read it again. And, you know, when you've read something and then you haven't read it for a while, it's neat to be able to go back and read it. So I just thought I'd mention that on June 9th, Porterville Fire Department will turn 142. And so my challenge is to, all I could find was 1927 on the police department when the city was chartered, but I want to know what date, because there's an exact date for the Porterville Fire Department when it was formed. So I'd like to know that date too. That's what I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, well, we have to go back into closed session.
No report will be made after.
Thank you. So we will now go into closed session. It's at 8:56 that we're heading there.